Let me call to order a special meeting of the St. Helena City Council for October 27, 2015.
And I'd like to call to order the special meeting, joint meeting with the City Council and Planning Commission for October 27, 2015.
And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Parker, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, individing and just as a whole.
Roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Kroll.
Doring.
Here.
Pitts. Planning Commissioner Chair Sarah Parker.
President.
Vice Chair Kissner.
Mayor.
Commissioner Monette.
Here.
Koberstein.
Here.
Sweeney.
Here.
Now, the session's going to be on Land Use 101. It's an interactive presentation. We have a microphone here, and the microphone can rove, and so if people have questions, they should raise their hand, and Ms. Black will pass them the microphone that is presently in my hand. There's no need to stand.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission. Land Use 101, basically just going over an overview of the principles governing land use decisions. It's with myself and Tom Brown, City Attorney. We will happily take questions as we present, but we are relatively limited on time, so just keep that in your mind as you ask your questions, or we may have to limit our responses, but can definitely follow up if there needs to be some additional answers or more information provided to complete an answer. Tom Brown's going to start off the presentation, and then I'm going to cover some of the more specific land use elements, and then Tom will wrap it up with some of the legal elements of land use decisions. And thank you all for attending.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a lot like Western Civ, so it is a survey course. There is necessarily, there is going to be a lot of specific information that we are just going to gloss over very quickly. I hope you'll be patient with it, and if you do have follow-up questions that we can't get to today, please give me a call or Noah, and we can try to answer those. But as you'll see from our agenda for today, we really do have a lot of different topics that we're going to try and get to, each one of which in and of itself would be an hour or two that we could spend on it. So we're going to start right in on the basis for all land use regulation, and that's called what they call the police power. It is constitutional in its origin. It exists under United States law and under the California Constitution. The United States zoning really and land use in its formal, you know, iterations came into existence in the early 1900s. And very early on, the courts, both the California Supreme Court and the United States Supreme Court, recognized this constitutional basis for it in the police power, saying that local decision-making on land use policy was one that was vested in local elected and appointed bodies such as yourselves under the police power. It's found in the California Constitution at Article 11, Section 7, at least as that affects a general law city like St. Helena. That being said, and in the law, there are always buts and caveats. The police power and your land use authority is subject to state law in certain areas where the state legislature has said that it has a predominant statewide interest, and it has passed laws that we are required to follow. Some of those, not all of them, but some of them include the law relating to the origin and the processes for selecting and meeting as a planning commission. In addition, there are general laws dealing with general and specific plans, which Noah's going to talk about next. Zoning regulations has its place in the state planning and zoning law. There is a subdivision map act. There is a section of the law that relates to development agreements, which we'll be talking about. SEQA, you're all familiar with that, has its own body of law, as does the Brown Act. There is a statute called the Permit Streamlining Act, which was enacted in response to slow-moving governmental decision-makers, and the legislature imposed on us an obligation that we act subject to certain deadlines. And finally, there's a mitigation fee act that governs how we impose impact fees on project development. Briefly, I want to talk about how we function under the law. St. Helena is a general law city. It's what's known as a general law city. In California, basically, we have two classes of cities. We have general law cities, and we have charter cities. General law cities such as St. Helena are subject to the laws of the state generally, typically, or most of which are found in the government code. Under those laws, St. Helena, like most general law cities, is known as a city council, city manager form of government. This is important because it creates the relationship between the elected city council and the appointed planning commission. Excuse me. Under state law, the city council, and under the municipal code, the city council appoints the planning commission, as you all know. The planning commission is deemed to be subordinate and advisory to the city council. Important to recognize, there is a hierarchy. The city council is responsible, as the elected body, for giving broad policy direction in all areas of city governance, including land use regulation. The city manager is, as you know, directs the day-to-day operations and directs city employees in the implementation of the broad policies that the elected city council passes. The planning commission, of course, has authority under state law and under the municipal code, much more limited, and advisory to the city council. It's important, I think, to recognize as well that the commission doesn't have independent authority to direct city staff or impose certain financial obligations on the city because that's reserved to the elected city council. Just very quickly, and we're going to get into more of the details of this, the commission and the council both will hold notice public hearings on land use decisions. This is going, these kinds of hearings will be both what are called legislative, when you're acting like the State Assembly or the Congress, and typically legislative, your legislative function is when you're adopting laws, when you adopt your general plan, when you adopt the zoning ordinance. You also act from time to time in an adjudicatory capacity. You act as judges, and those decisions are typically the non-legislative decisions. Those are the kinds of decisions, we're going to get into that in a second, that are like conditional use permit decisions, design review, subdivision maps. In those situations, you're acting like laws. You're, I'm sorry, you're acting like judges. The distinction is important because depending on the kind of decision you're making, there are certain obligations that the law imposes on you. There is a public hearing process. You're well aware of it. Typically, what happens is that in a situation where you're acting as judges in an adjudicatory capacity, there will be a presentation made by your staff. You'll ask brief preliminary questions of your staff. There will be a presentation by the applicant. The public then will have its opportunity to weigh in. There will be a recognition of both of those, and then the applicant is afforded an opportunity to respond to the presentation of the public, to address certain things that the public may have said. All of this comes to, and I'm going to get to it in a second, the fact that when you're acting as judges, there are due process, constitutional due process and fair hearing requirements that we have to adhere to. And fairness requires a recognition of the fact that people, that project applicants and the public both have roles as stakeholders that have to be respected in the law. And finally, there is an opportunity for rebuttal or response to the presentations that are made. I'm going to turn it over now to Noah to talk about general plans.
Thank you, Tom. So general plans are often referred to as the constitution for development in a city. They are intended to be long-term, living documents, comprehensive for land use and beyond, so not just land use decisions, but multiple elements. Generally, they are updated at the most every four years. Housing elements are required to be updated either four or eight years. So eight years is more typical. Some communities, it's a little bit more of a long-term process, but generally, it's four or eight years. General plan language is intentionally broad, very different from zoning code regulations. It's not intended to have the same specificity because it's not the same function. Because they're living documents, they're meant to be interpreted over time as society changes or the needs of the community change. Specific binding regulations belong in the zoning code. That's not the place for the general plan policies. And general plans, just to clarify, are adopted by resolution, whereas zoning code or zoning changes are adopted by ordinance. There's seven required elements in a general plan, which is a state requirement. They include land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, noise, safety. As you can see, there's much more than just land use elements, and their influence is wide-ranging. It's important that this information be consistent because these policies, or the policies in these areas, are what creates the nexus between development impacts and the city goals. So essentially, if there's a threshold for one police officer for every thousand residents, if a project proposes to increase the number of residents, that threshold, which lives in the general plan, is what allows the city to ask the developer to address that impact. So it's separate from SEQA or environmental impacts. Nexus can be created by general plan policies. So that's an important element of general plans beyond just land use. As mentioned, they're comprehensive and long-term documents. They're intended to be integrated and internally consistent. That's very important, that they're, all of the elements that were listed are internally consistent. Again, it helps provide nexus and fees, and if you are challenged on a decision that you're making findings that the project's consistent with the general plan, its internal consistency is a very important element for it. And just some of the nexus, getting beyond the public safety example, are infrastructure improvements, so if there's roadway extensions that are identified in the general plan, park and land acreage, those types of things are how you can leverage development or private projects to implement policies or mechanisms that further the goals of the city. They're, again, presumed valid. This is kind of the beginning of the court's deference to local jurisdictions for land use decisions. So again, you cannot emphasize the importance of internal consistency because the court defers to city and local jurisdictions as basically being the keepers of land use and all things in the general plan. It's important that the general plan be consistent in all elements.
If I might just weigh in for a second on that. So Noah is spot-on right, that the courts do defer to us as the local arbiters of what sound land use policy ought to be, but it really can't be emphasized strongly enough that the general plan is where it all starts. It's the Constitution, and all of your land use decisions have to be consistent with this. That will include your decisions that you're making when you're acting as judges. And often, planning commissioners and council members will ask me, can we impose this kind of an exaction or a condition on this project? And the answer will always start with, what does the general plan say about that? So the general plan process can't be overstated as to how important it is to be thinking in terms of all of these local policies that you want to have into place because it will govern all of the work that you do down the road.
Thank you. So just adding to what Tom said, all land use decisions, and frankly, all decisions in the city that are relevant to the general plan must be consistent with the general plan, and one of the legal terms for that consistency is vertical and horizontal consistency. So all decisions made vertically under the general plan, basically, all actions come under the general plan. So when the planning commission approves a use permit, that comes from the regulations in the zoning code, which is supported by the policies in the general plan, so it's all vertically consistent. The horizontal consistency comes from internally consistent, so you can't have the open space area talking about a desired park threshold that then is not reflected or consistent in other elements of the document. The legal term is in agreement or harmony, and any decision must further and not obstruct the plan objectives. But again, the deference is to the local jurisdiction, so we have the authority to make a determination as to whether a project is in harmony or does further and not obstruct the general plan unless the courts get involved through a challenge.
And I just, you know, one thing I'll add to that is, when and from time to time, it happens that cities are challenged on the basis of general plan consistency in court. The assertion being made that some approval of a land use project is inconsistent with the general plan. When we talk in terms of deference, there is really strong language from the California Supreme Court and the Courts of Appeal that is along the lines of this, and I cite it all the time in these cases. The courts have said, we cannot overstate, and we state it emphatically, that it is not the role of the courts to micromanage these land use decisions. And the courts use that term, "micromanage." We don't do that. What they say is, you're the ones who wrote this law. You're the ones with the best understanding of what you meant and intended. Now, does that mean you have carte blanche to ignore it? Of course not. But I just want to emphasize again that the concept of general plan consistency is not slavish and mechanical. It's one of real sort of fluidity and subjectivity, intentionally so.
So now that we have gone over how all decisions must be consistent, I think it's important to also point out that a lot of policies in the general plan can be interpreted as conflicting with each other. So just to make it a little bit more of a head-scratcher, as an example, I went through the general plan today, the '93 general plan, the one that's adopted and in policy, and there's two policies in the housing area. One says encourage new residential development in all density ranges that is consistent with scale and character of the older residential districts in the city, particularly the neighborhoods west of Main Street, which is primarily a historic development pattern, not very dense. The very next policy encourages the development of higher-density housing in areas near the center of downtown and close to recreation and services. So as you can see, there is room for interpretation, so some folks may see those as in conflict with each other, and that's where it's up to the planning commission, the city council, and city staff to talk about why a project is consistent with the general plan, even though they may be competing policies. And that's where, again, it comes back to the deference of the courts. It's the city's document, it's the city's determination, and so it's just very important for decision-makers to understand that someone may, who may have a different view of a project, may point to a policy that is seen as conflicting, however, generally, staff will try to provide the analysis that shows why a project is overall consistent. So specific plans, there are some specific plans here in town. They are just below general plans in the hierarchy of development regulations. They can be seen as kind of a general plan focused on a specific geographic area, but they provide much more detail. They can have prescriptive level of development requirements similar to zoning regulations. They're often utilized to identify a city's desires for infrastructure improvements, design or character in a specific part of town. And all zoning regulations and land use decisions must be consistent with specific plan requirements if they're being made within a specific plan. So that's just an important distinction. And basically, it's a tool that allows decision-makers to focus their review, their general plan level review, on a certain area. And one of the benefits is the environmental analysis that goes into adopting a specific plan. So if you conduct an EIR level analysis for a specific plan, and then a project came along that implemented that plan, that project, in theory, could rely on the environmental analysis that was conducted in the preparation of the specific plan and could kind of help out that project development or kind of supplement a need for an additional environmental review or possibly allow a specific project to tier off of that EIR. So that's just an important element here in town. The one right here for the, it's always been called the demany property to me, but it's our Mills Lane extends. There's a specific plan for that area that identifies a hotel or office building to be developed on the demany property, and that has been adopted and is in place currently.
Like the Highway 29 plan?
Highway 29 plan, that's correct.
Highway specific.
Yes, that's the Highway 29 specific plan. Thank you, Mayor. So zoning regulations, thank you, sir. So the definition of zoning, zoning describes the control by authority of land use of land and all the buildings thereon. Areas of land are divided by appropriate authorities into zones within which various uses are permitted. So that's just a very generic definition I pulled off the Internet, but basically, zoning is where the rubber meets the road with land use. It implements the general plan but also provides specific development criteria. It identifies the zoning districts, which are intended to separate uses, and the goal is to minimize impacts by providing regulations in each district. It draws distinction between areas and designations. Each district will have specific regulations and requirements. Uses will be identified as permitted, conditionally permitted, or prohibited uses, and it must be reasonably related to the public welfare. So let's get back to some of the legal authority and legal kind of leverage that cities are given to implement zoning regulations. And again, the courts defer to the city in these determinations oftentimes. Land use is 100% local, except in areas where the state has preempted it through laws such as SEQA or affordable housing requirements.
Yeah, just briefly, often, people misunderstand zoning and the kind of latitude that you have in creating zoning. What the courts have said is zoning is all about line drawing. It's all about making arbitrary distinctions. One example is the short-term rental ordinance, and people will say, well, why is 29 days not okay, but 31 days is okay? And the answer is that this is exactly what legislators do. You draw lines. You create distinctions that make sense from a local standpoint. Why is a setback requirement in one district 20 feet and it's 15 in another? These are the kinds of things that the courts say, we're not touching this. This is a local land use authority. Again, it's all about line drawing, or as Mason said to Dixon, you got to draw the line somewhere.
And then getting back to, it's essentially, the goal is to create or to protect the public welfare. No one would want a mechanic shop opening up in their neighborhood, and that's the example, a very simpleistic example of how and why zoning regulations and zoning districts are in place. Additionally, if there's a use that is conditionally permitted, meaning it may be all right, but the city or the jurisdiction wants the ability to review it, to place conditions on how they operate to minimize the impacts, that's also enacted through the zoning code. Again, it must be consistent with the general plan, but this is where very specific requirements and regulations belong. So just getting back to the point about the general plan, that is intended to be general, high-level, 10,000 feet. The zoning code is where the specific requirements for how and why should be identified and implemented. There are essentially two types of zoning or zoning amendments. There's a text amendment, which is actually changing the rules in the zoning code or changing the regulations, and then what's called as a zoning reclassification or a map amendment. So you're changing the designation of the property on the ground from one district to And essentially, I believe that is where Tom's going to take over and talk about the initiative and referendum process.
Before we do that, do anybody have questions about, we kind of speeded through some important and big stuff. Does anybody have a question about where we've been?
I have a direct question on the last screen you had up there, Tom. No. I had a question on the last slide you had up there, the enactment, the reclassification of property from one district to another. Can you do that by specific lot, or do you have to do it over a generalized area?
So rezonings can definitely be lots specific. No question.
Yeah, so the question was, can you rezone just one specific property? And 100%, you can. Again, it has to be consistent with the general plan designation of that property. So getting back to the 10,000-foot level, the city will designate certain areas of town with general plan designations. The zoning code must implement that general plan designation. However, you might have a general plan designation of high density, but the property's historically been zoned medium density, and when the general plan was amended, the zoning wasn't amended to keep up with it. So someone may come in and propose to amend that zoning designation to be consistent with the general plan. That's a very easy, straightforward process. Other folks might come in to change both the general plan and the zoning on a property to make changes to the property or allowable uses. I'm sure a lot of us have heard of spot zoning, so there is a potential for a project to be reviewed as spot zoning, which means a city or jurisdiction may arbitrarily change zoning designations to accommodate maybe a very limited scope of goals. That is illegal under the state law. So I've never been involved in a process where that was, where a jurisdiction was accused of doing that, but that is something that has been the subject of lawsuits and litigation in the past.
Well, yeah, and actually, I've dealt with spot zoning, and the rule on spot zoning came into existence because cities were doing something that was pretty pernicious. They were, they would basically look at one parcel, and all of the surrounding parcels around this one parcel, let's say they were all designated commercial, and then this one parcel, for whatever reason, gets designated open space. Well, the rule of spot zoning says you can't zone someone out of existence, or you can't zone them in a manner that puts them to a substantial economic disadvantage. However, there is a big however in the law about spot zoning. You can do it if it is reasonable, and there are rules for deciding what is reasonable, and you can also do it if it creates a more favorable situation for this one spot. There was a very good, favorable to cities, I always say decisions are good or bad based on if they are good for the mission of cities, a very good one over the last year about spot zoning that said just that. It was clearly spot zoning, but the court said, actually, it was rational, which is the standard for judging it, and it didn't put this one parcel at a disadvantage economically. It actually put it at an advantage economically. That wasn't deemed to be illegal spot zoning, which is what Noah was describing. Anyway, that's.
And that gets back to the deference to the courts give to local land use decisions.
Thank you.
All right. So now, we've talked about how you act as a legislator in adopting your general plan and your zoning. And by the way, there are rules, both in our municipal code and under state law, for how you accomplish the adoption of your general plan and your zoning, and this is how you do it as your appointed planning commission and your elected city council. That is the legislative process. But is that the only way to do it? Answer is no. What we have is, in California, since the late 1800s, early 1900s, when the railroads were king and the railroads owned the legislature, the California Constitution was amended by a powerful popular movement to create the initiative right and the referendum right. Those are both enshrined in the California Constitution. And in a Napa County case involving the Ag Reserve in the 1980s, a case called DeVita versus County of Napa, the California Supreme Court decided that the initiative authority under the California Constitution extends also to land use decision-making. In other words, initiative can be used to adopt general plans and to adopt zoning. That was a little bit in doubt until DeVita was decided by the California Supreme Court, but that is really well settled now. We all know that's the case. So there are rules associated with it. One of the rules is, by the way, the California courts do what they call jealously guard the right of initiative and referendum. So important is this right deemed to be under the California Constitution, this right of the people to directly legislate. And by the way, it creates a lot of mischief as well, but it's a powerful tool. What they call ballot box legislation, ballot box land use. It can be done very poorly, but it's still a powerful tool, and the courts jealously guard it. Now, a couple of rules associated with this. Again, I could spend a couple hours on initiative and referendum. Initiatives are how you create legislation. Referenda, or referendums, are how you invalidate legislation that you all have passed. So an example of that in Napa, in the city of St. Helena last year, was the small winery ordinance. The city council adopted a The city council adopted a small winery ordinance and that prompted a lot of passionate disagreement in the community. A referendum petition was circulated and presented to the city council and the city council heeded that and, and repealed the version of the small winery ordinance it had passed. That was an example of the exercise in St. Helena of the referendum authority. Initiative authority is where the voters in the community say, our city council isn't doing what we want and we think this would be a good law locally. We're going to propose this. The elections code creates the rules for both initiatives and referenda. Typically, you have to have a specified percentage of the, the folks who voted in your last election. It's like depending on the action taken, it's 10 or 15% usually. So a fairly small percentage of people can initiate or referend under the state constitution and the elections code. A couple of things are important to know. One is SEQA does not apply to initiative or referenda. So the people can circulate a petition and put something on the ballot and they don't have to comply with SEQA. Is that true? Who thinks that's true if the city council puts something on the ballot rather than adopts an ordinance itself? The California Supreme Court, this used to be up in the air, the California Supreme Court told us that, that if a city council, before a city council puts an initiative on the ballot that will have land use and potential environmental impacts, the council must comply with SEQA. There are ways to do that. Now, I'm gonna get into the weeds a little bit. There's one exception to that, and that is this. When the community circulates a, an initiative petition that qualifies under the elections code to be put on the ballot, under the elections code, a city council has two options. It either puts it on the ballot, in which case SEQA is not required, or it can simply say, we're, we're gonna save the voters and the citizens the expense and time of an election. We hear the voices, we're just gonna adopt it. For years, people thought about whether, in fact, that, that summary adoption in response to an initiative petition would be subject to SEQA. In a case that I litigated a couple of years ago, the Court of Appeal decided it and the California Supreme Court has upheld that, it is not subject to SEQA. So if an initiative petition comes to the city council and the city council opts as one of its two actions under the elections code, not to put it on the ballot, that is not subject to SEQA. It makes a lot of people crazy. They think that that is a loophole in SEQA. That's for the legislature and not for, for me to argue about. Okay. Now, we've talked about, we've talked about legislation. We've talked about the general plan, we've talked about the zoning ordinance. Here's when we're gonna, we're gonna shift gears and talk about how you implement both. And we call it, and most of the treatises on land use talk about this as administrative relief, administrative zoning relief. And typically, what this means is that most general plans and zoning ordinances recognize that the strict application of zoning isn't always the best idea, that there ought to be some uses for which the zoning ordinance is not going to allow it as a permitted use, but it's gonna allow it if you say so. And how do you say so? Through a conditional use permit, through a variance, through design review, like that. When you're acting, when you're acting to, on an application for relief, for zoning relief here, you're acting as a judge. You're acting in a quasi-judicial or adjudicative capacity and there are rules that apply. That don't apply, by the way, when you're, when you're deciding to adopt laws, when you're acting legislatively. You're not required to, to comply with due process, fair hearing requirements when you're making law. But when you're applying law like a judge, then those rules come into play. Now, quickly, these are called entitlements. When you, when you grant a CUP, conditional use permit, when you grant a design review, when you grant other entitlements such as a subdivision map, those are deemed to be entitlements. Couple of things about them. They run with the land. That means you can't say, we're giving this permit to Mr. Jones because we trust him, but, but he can't transfer that right. Once you grant that permit to anybody, that permit is fully transferable. There's a lot of case law on that. In addition, that is deemed to be an entitlement. It is a property right protected by constitutional principles. And you can't take it away unless you provide certain due process. Now, what does that mean? Does that mean you can never take a permit away, a CUP away from someone who is a really problem use, a nuisance use? Of course not. We have revocation provisions in our zoning ordinance that allow for that. But you have to give them notice and opportunity to be heard. You have to give them due process under the constitution because they have this as a property right. Quickly, what are some of the fair hearing requirements that apply when you're acting like a judge? When you're, when you are granting a property right, you're acting in this quasi-judicial capacity. You have to give notice and an opportunity to be heard. What does notice mean? There is mailed notice to people who live within 300 feet of the property. There is posted notice. There are published notice in the newspaper. These are all principles that were developed by the courts but are now enshrined in the planning and zoning law and in our municipal code. You have to give an opportunity to be heard. The stakeholders, including, by the way, the neighbors, but also most prominently, the property owner and the applicant, has to be given an opportunity to be heard on the, on the matter before you. We'll talk about what that means. When they come before you, does the opportunity to be heard, the right to be heard include the ability to drone on for an hour? No. You can impose reasonable time limits. Does that mean that you can arbitrarily cut somebody off in every instance? You probably can, but you need to be careful. You need to be thinking in this situation, due process is a fairly elastic principle. It's one that will vary depending on the circumstances. So if you have a very controversial project, you have a property, property owner or an applicant comes before you and they are the only person in favor of this application and you have everyone else in the world as opposed to it, the property owner gets 10 minutes, the neighborhood and those opposed spend three hours opposing it. Does that mean that the property owner and the applicant only gets five minutes to rebut at the end? You have to really apply common sense in that situation. That's where, and I think that the best, the best solution in that situation is look to Noah. Noah's gonna probably say, you might wanna, you might wanna afford slightly more time here. There were issues raised by the opposition that they really ought to be given an opportunity to respond to. It's really common sense. It's all about fairness. We know, the courts have told us that constitutional due process and statutory fair hearing requirements apply here, and that's part of it.
And that's where it gets to the unbiased, impartial requirement. So you need to demonstrate that you're being unbiased and impartial and you have not prejudged the application. And part of demonstrating that is to give a fair response to either side of the issue.
Okay. How formal do you have to be at these hearings? Do we follow formal rules of evidence like we're in a courtroom? Anybody? No, we don't. It's, it's pretty well settled that, that it is an informal process. We're recognizing that we have folks in neighborhoods who are coming out to these things. We have mainly laypeople who are hearing and deciding these things. The courts have recognized that and said, formal rules of evidence don't apply. Hearsay can come in. My advice typically based on court cases is hearsay is okay, but you'd sure want something that corroborates it, that's not hearsay in the record before you. You wanna keep a record, by the way, because all of this is subject to court challenge. The burden of proof is typically on the, the permit applicant in these situations. They have to persuade you that, that they, that, that the findings you will need to make, and we'll talk about findings in a second, are supported, are there. There is, consistent with what I said about rules of evidence and courtroom proceedings don't apply, from time to time, someone's gonna come in front of you and say, well, I wanna swear that witness. I want them to swear under penalty of perjury that there are traffic impacts here. And the answer is no, they don't have a right to do that. There will be some situations where we, where I will advise you that you need to think about that, and that's mainly gonna be where you're revoking somebody's entitlement and there are heightened property rights at stake. But typically, when someone is applying for a permit before you, no right to swear a witness, no right to cross-examine. That means when a neighbor comes up and says, I think that there are aesthetic and traffic impacts, the, the property, the applicant's lawyer doesn't get to say, test those, those opinions. This is an informal process. Now, there's a lot of questions that we get about ex parte evidence. What this means is before the public hearing is opened and you're in a, in a Brown Act agendized meeting, the property owner, the applicant is gonna call you up and is gonna say, I wanna meet with you out at the property. I wanna tell you about this, about this project and what I think about it. It used to be, back in the 1950s, that was verboten. You could not do it. That's not the case anymore. Ex parte, ex parte contacts are common and they are accepted in the law. But I'm gonna tell you what the big proviso is with that. And now, I will also say that many cities, not most of them, but many cities have adopted prohibitions on ex parte contacts. That is the exception, not the rule. St. Helena has no such rule and so it is perfectly fine for you to take that developer's call, to take the neighbor's call, to talk with them about it. You can't talk to each other about it, but you, because of the Brown Act, but you can take those, you can get that ex parte evidence. Here's how you do it. If you have gotten evidence, if people have lobbied you outside the public hearing, if you viewed the property, if you have looked at maps, you have to disclose it. You have to disclose it and you have to do it at the outset of the public hearing such that all the stakeholders have a fair opportunity to address that. They get a chance to, so, so now often it'll be that all you will have heard will be 20 calls from neighbors who are saying, please don't vote in favor of this. That's fine. Disclose that and say, and say, really, I've heard nothing substantive that is, is in the way of evidence. These are all arguments. But it's important to disclose these kinds of contacts. Now, if you, if you, for example, have looked at drawings or simulations that are, that are going into your decision-making, that is crucial to disclose because the stakeholders need to have an opportunity to test that. They have to have the same rights. Paul?
What is the city's policy with respect to emails that come through to an individual, either a planning commissioner or a council member? Is it a policy that we are forwarding those on to somebody or how do they get disclosed?
The question was, what is the city's policy with respect to emails that come into individual decision-makers, either planning commissioners or council members? I'm assuming you mean with respect to an adjudicatory decision you're making.
Yes.
So the answer to that is if it is, if it is presenting to you evidence on which you are forming an opinion, that needs to be disclosed. You don't have to turn over the email, by the way. And there's a lot of law that suggests that, that those emails might be protected from disclosure. Maybe not. You know, a, I think it's, I think it's possible that, that that is, well, let me say, that issue is before the California Supreme Court now, as to whether that document must be turned over. What is clear is that if that email contains information upon which you will rely in making your decision, you need to disclose that, such that people have an opportunity to, to respond to that.
I'd just like to add a couple of things.
I have a question. I didn't finish. Here you go.
Do you wanna ask?
It's in regard to the, into the, is this one? I have a question on if emails that are sent to us but forwarded on and then become part of the packet, that does not need to be disclosed, just to clarify that.
That's correct because it would be the, the.
Part of the public record.
That's correct. And so what I was gonna say is I always encourage if a, if an applicant or a concerned citizen sends an email to only one member of the commissioner council or to the entire, but not to staff, in order to allow that to become part of the record, because later on it could be said that that information helped in your decision-making or hindered either way. I always encourage decision-makers to forward that on to staff. Staff can then forward it on to the entire body for the, for the record and also, or to the, for the entire body for their review and then also keep a copy in the file for the record so the public understands that that communication was there and what information is in it. I was just gonna add that we had a little bit of a discussion at the last commission meeting regarding the bylaws and ex parte communication. We will be talking about that further when we review the bylaws, but from a staff's perspective, ex parte communication is important and land use decisions because it's important for, for decision-makers to be able to visit properties. And it's very hard or challenging to coordinate visiting those properties if you cannot communicate with applicants, property owners, et cetera. And similarly, it's important for decision-makers to be able to discuss or at least hear from, from concerned citizens or maybe neighboring residents of projects or properties where projects are proposed. And there's no mechanism to be able to visit those properties, have those discussions or at least hear those, that input without having ex parte communication. So it is somewhat of a tricky element to land use, but I think it's an important one. But we will be following up on that discussion in the bylaw discussion at the commission.
I'm thinking you could, you could, you could tell the applicant initially, please don't say anything about what other commissioners you've seen have said, but they may anyway. So if they do, I mean, what are you supposed to do with that?
Tell them no.
I mean.
Just say no.
What do you mean? No, if they just say, oh, so and so and so has said that and you hear it.
It's important to, I'm sorry Bobby, but that's, it's a point I wanted to get to and we need to push on a little bit. But, but let me just say that, that what Bobby is describing there is a Brown Act issue.
Right.
It's not a due process, fair hearing issue. It's a Brown Act issue. So if anybody, the developer or neighbors are saying, look, you know, Jones and Smith have both told me that they're in favor of this project, you need to stop them.
Well, sure, but you've heard it.
You need to cut that conversation off.
So just cutting it will, will, of course you would, but just cutting it is all you need to do. You don't have to worry about.
It's very difficult for, by the way, these rules are not intuitive. These are, you know, we recognize that people in a community want to say these things because these are their friends and these are people that they've grown up with and know well. But the law doesn't allow that. And so it's important that you, that, that if someone is telling you how others on your commission are voting, it's important to, to try and cut it off and get out of that conversation.
If you've heard it already though, do you need to disclose that?
Yeah.
I don't know what, what do you do with it? I mean, you know, you tell them no.
No, no, please.
I mean, in public.
I would say that.
In public.
The important thing is to tell someone, that is illegal for me to hear.
And that's it.
And so that's the end of that.
Okay, all right.
Is, is, yeah. And, and really, the best thing is that when, when anyone that you suspect may give you that kind of information starts the conversation, really just tell them, please don't tell me how, you know, how your conversations have gone with other commissioners. I need to push on a little bit. So another rule on due process, fair hearing is the rule that says, he or she who decides must hear. And that's the old rule that says, if you're not present for the public hearing, you can't vote on it. Now, that's subject to the qualification that the law allows you to listen to the meeting tapes or view the, view the video. And as long as you can hear it and understand it, and then you're, you're present at the next meeting, you may vote. But you have to make clear that you have fully listened to all of the tapes and all of the evidence. Finally, there's an, there's an important sort of common sense rule here, and that is fairness, fair hearings require that you act like judges. You act kinda like grownups, which means you wanna be, you want to be considerate and thoughtful and polite. You wanna be respectful. And I say this, it seems like all of you are saying, well, duh, that's who we are. But it's not so in every community. There's a very famous case where someone videoed the Los Angeles, either city council or planning commission, conducting a hearing on a, on a conditional use permit and the members of the committee, and I kid you not, you can't make it up, one of them was eating dinner, the other one was, was looking clearly at, at emails, the other was reading the newspaper. None of them was paying attention politely to the evidence. And the Court of Appeal in that case said, that was a violation of due process, fair hearing. So it's common sense. I, I'm embarrassed to even bring it up, but I will say that is part of the, part of the rule. I'm gonna turn it over now to Noah to talk about subdivisions.
Thank you, Tom. So subdivisions are another one of those areas where, you know, land use is local except where the state has preempted some of the requirements or, or regulations by, by passing what's called the Subdivision Map Act, state law. Subdivisions are somewhat of a unique element of land use as, again, they're. Subdivisions are somewhat of a unique element of land use as, again, they're both state and local and the, both laws, laws at both levels provide direction. So, essentially, subdivision map act grants the power to regulate the, the design and improvement of subdivisions. It must be implemented through a local ordinance, which we have. And we can, local jurisdictions are allowed to set the process and requirements and add to subdivision requirements where the map act is silent. However, nothing that the local jurisdiction does can contradict the subdivision map act law. Again, all actions must be consistent with the general plan, density, policies, those types of things. And then, again, the subdivision map act gives us the nexus to mitigate impacts both to SEQA and jurisdictional impact. So, this ties back to the general plan, some of the transportation points I made, you know, if you're creating this many new units or this many more new lots, general plan policies would allow the city to require the developer to offset those impacts separate from SEQA. So, this is a separate, you can call it a mitigation measure, but it's, it's a separate offset of impacts set living outside of SEQA. There's a definition of subdivision, division of improved or unimproved land for the purposes of sale, lease, or financing. So, you can subdivide existing developed property. One of the, one of the rules is you cannot subdivide, you can't have a structure which crosses property lines. So, if you're trying to subdivide an existing structure, then it needs to be subdivided as a condominium with, airspace condominium is one way to do it, or, or townhomes. There actually is a perceived separation in those lots, even though you don't see it from the outside. So, there's, there are very specific kind of requirements if you try to subdivide a structure itself. So, there's different types of maps. There's tentative maps and parcel maps. A parcel map is four lots or less. T tentative map is larger than that. And I will like to add to this, there is also what's called a vested tentative map. And so, a vested tentative map is a subdivision, specific type. It must be identified as a vested map when it's submitted. And the definition of a vested map, just going again from a definition I pulled off online, a vested tentative map, approval of a vested map by, tentative map by the approving authority shall establish a vested right to proceed with applicable ordinances and general, I'm sorry, ordinances, general and specific plans in effect that, at the date the accompanying application is deemed complete. So, what that means is, if you file an application for a subdivision, the city deems that application complete and then the general plan or zoning regulations are changed after that application is filed, the project must be reviewed under the rules that were in effect at the time the map is filed. So, that's a very important distinction for some projects that come forward and it's, it's very important when jurisdictions are in the process of reviewing a general plan like us or considering modifying zoning regulations or reviewing a specific plan. So, that's just a very important distinction. You will, it has to be identified as a vested map on all subdivision documents. So, it will be listed as such on the submittal materials. But just if you see vested map, know that there are additional property rights or, or regulations that are tied to that.
And briefly, the, the map act actually has a second, it's called, it's sort of vesting light. There's another provision in the, in the map act that, that grants similar vesting based on when a map application is submitted and deemed complete by the local, the local agency. And again, that, that requires us to apply only the regulations that are in effect at the time we've deemed the map complete. Really, all of this happened as a result of some case law that happened where cities were, were winning too big in the courts and, and were effectively making financing of projects impossible because they were changing the rules long down the road when an application had been, had already even been approved. The development, the building community went to the legislature. This is an area where our local authority, our police power, our, our wings got clipped by the legislature and were not able to, to really change the rules, you know, once something is in process.
So, now, we're changing gears a little bit to SEQA. Just so you know, I took an entire semester-long course just on SEQA, so we're going to try to just hit the high points here and, you know, there is much more detail. Happy to answer any questions that come out of this discussion at a later time. But essentially, California Environmental Quality Act, it's modeled after the National Environmental Policy Act. NEPA was adopted in 1969. A lot of little NEPA statutes were adopted in 1970. Clean Air Act, Clean Water Act, et cetera, is established to prevent significant damage to the environment, foster informed public decision-making transparency. And I will just say, as important as the environmental protections are in SEQA, public participation and transparency are given equal weight in SEQA. So, that's where, you know, anything that happens in, in a planning application is public record. Any comment that's provided to city staff on a public, on a development application or project is public record. So, it's very important for citizens to understand, if you write a letter or even give me a phone call giving comments on a project, that is part of the public record. I will be taking notes and I will summarize that statement to decision-makers. If it's a phone call, I, I may not include the specific name attached to it, but if it's an email, that needs to be understood that that will be provided to decision-makers as a part of the record. And it's, and that's part of SEQA. It's encouraged to do so.
Thank you.
So, SEQA contains a substantive mandate. Basically, jurisdictions must refrain from approving projects with significant environmental effects. If there are feasible alternatives or mitigation measures can feas, can significantly lessen or avoid these effects. So, it's our responsibility to both look at alternatives, if we're looking at an EIR level analysis, or to require mitigation measures if the project has been identified as having environmental impacts. Further, environmental impacts is somewhat subjective. I mean, some folks may not agree that a, that a aesthetic impact is environmental, but that is included in the SEQA checklist. So, so, staff, decision-makers have to look at a laundry list of, of requirements under SEQA. I think there's 26 areas of analysis, 24, I'm not sure, but there are over 20 levels of, of areas where environmental analysis must be done. And aesthetics is just an example of one that not everyone agrees is an environmental impact, but it's something that we need to look at under SEQA. So, it applies to projects. So, definition of a project. State, local, public agency involvement is a huge element of what a project is. It's a decision undertaken by a public agency, supported or funded by a public agency, approved, permitted, licensed by a public agency with the potential for physical effect on the environment, either directly or indirectly through foreseeable changes. And then, it gets back to the whole of an action. So, in some situations, or historically, folks would break a project up to try to minimize the environmental review. That's called segmenting. That's specifically prohibited under SEQA. So, you have to look at the whole of the action. If you notice on your agenda titles, there'll be, there's always a SEQA status and it's either not a project, you know, categorically, statutorily exempt, or there's an environmental document that's, that's created for that. You'll notice some things, you might be scratching your head, "Why is this subject to SEQA?" Well, if, if a jurisdiction is making an effort towards a decision which includes even spending money, that can be subject to SEQA and it may, it may be a project under SEQA even though no development is actually occurring. And so, that's why we spend a lot of time with Tom in our agenda review to make sure that we're meeting the legal requirements of that.
Just really quickly, almost everything you do from a land use standpoint will be subject to SEQA. What does that mean? Noah's going to get into that. But, but just understand that, that whether you're acting as a legislator or a judge, everything you do, the adoption of a general plan, the adoption of a zoning ordinance or amendment, the issuance of a CUP, the grant of, of a permit, all of those decisions are subject to SEQA. You don't have to struggle with that. We're kind of getting in the weeds here. But for your standpoint, just recognize, it's going to be rare that a land use decision you're making is not subject to SEQA.
And, I mean, and that's, it's, SEQA work is primarily staff responsibility, so we will make sure that all the requirements under SEQA are brought, are taken care of before we bring it to you. But you're the decision-making authority. It's your job to review those. Questions, staff, if you have questions about it. And you will see, some documents for larger level projects are extensive. There's a significant amount of work that goes into ensuring all the analysis is done. So, this, this is where does SEQA not apply? So, ministerial decisions. So, planning applications, development review applications are discretionary under the law. Ministerial are not. There's no, there's no discretion in the decision. If you do A, B, or C, you are guaranteed the permit and that's a building permit. So, as long as your project meets the building code, you're going to get a building permit. There's no question about it, which means there's no discretion and that's not a project under SEQA. Decision with no possibility of impact. So, later on in the council agenda, you see there's some projects that are identified as not a project because there's no possibility of impact. Denial of a project, not subject to SEQA. So, if an application comes in, staff says, "Well, there's no way this meets the regulations." The applicant demands a decision. We will bring that forward to you with the recommendation for denial with no SEQA work because it's not required, which makes sense. If you're going to deny the project, there's no need for any environmental analysis on the project's impacts. And then, finally, preliminary actions that don't commit to a project. And then, so you'll see also on the agenda tonight, a couple items that identify, they identify exemptions, but then they also further say, "Any future development or impacts associated with this project will be reviewed separately." So, that's just an example of, of preliminary actions that decision-makers often take that aren't subject to SEQA because they, they don't have the potential to impact the environment. So, there's a couple of different types of exemptions. Decision-makers in land use decisions are, are much more common to see categorical exemption and that's basically just like it sounds, categories of projects that are deemed exempt. A four-lot subdivision that has no environmental impacts is one specific category that is identified in SEQA as being categorically exempt. Statutory exemptions are, they're all over the map and they're basically exemptions that the legislature has passed for very specific things. So, the 1984 Olympics in Los Angeles, statutorily exempt from SEQA. So, the legislature says, "We love the Olympics in LA. Don't worry about SEQA for those projects." And so, that's, they have the ability to do that. They pass the law. They can give themselves a get out of jail free card. There are some other statutory exemptions granted to, to jurisdictions, the ability to replace up to a mile in pipe. And it's, it's given to us intentionally to allow cities and counties to, to handle business, take care of the day-to-day efforts of government. So, there is some thought that's put into statutory and categorical exemptions. However, if a project has documented environmental impacts, the exemptions go out the window. So, you still, occasionally, you'll still have to do some environmental analysis to make a determination as to whether or not it'll have an impact before you can identify that a project qualifies for an exemption. This is the checklist that's used. This is called initial study. You all are very familiar with seeing these. And if, this is how you determine the significance of a project. So, if it comes in and it doesn't meet the exemption requirements, an initial study's done to determine whether or not the project will have impacts and then what level of mitigation's required, if any. Initial studies often result in either negative declarations or mitigated negative declarations. And then, oftentimes, if you know a project's going to have impacts, you can go straight to an EIR. You do not require an initial study if you go straight to an EIR level analysis. EIR is environmental impact report. So, lead agencies are responsible for determining the significance of impacts and document what those impacts are and if mitigation's necessary. This, again, gets back to some of the deference that the state gives to local jurisdictions. Almost, in most areas of SEQA, it's the local jurisdiction that makes the determination as to whether an impact is significant or not. This is important for you to hear because you may have a project that comes before you that, you know, is extending a roadway in front of someone's home where it's a dead end now. And that resident will say, "That is a significant impact to me." And, and without a doubt, they may feel that way. That does not mean it's a significant impact to the community or under SEQA. So, there is a distinction that's important to make, for you to understand that it is the local jurisdiction's authority to make significance determinations. Like Tom said, there's always a but. And so, except in areas where the legislature has, has deemed these agencies to be responsible agencies. So, in SEQA, there's a lead agency, which most of the projects you see from us are, the city is the lead agency. But then, under that, there are responsible agencies. So, for projects touching Highway 29, Main Street running through town, Caltrans is a responsible agency to us through that review process. So, that means that while impact, significance determination is ours, except when there's a responsible agency, the state has said they're responsible for looking at impacts to that resource, such as the highway running through town. Another example is Fish and Wildlife Service protecting endangered species, Army Corps of Engineers looking at wetland impacts. So, while the significance determination is local, it's not always. So, that's just, it's an important clarification for when you're thinking about reviewing significance determinations and environmental documents in the future. There's, there's requirements, legal, legal thresholds that must be made for the determination. Substantial evidence is one of them. So, the definition of that is facts, expert opinion supported by facts, reasonable assumptions, et cetera. There's also a fair argument threshold. Let's go to the next one. That's right. So, those, those distinctions kind of come into place depending on what level of review you're doing. So, if you're looking at a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration, staff has said the impacts are mitigated, there's traffic report, there's a biologic assessment, all these things identify it. And then, maybe someone who's opposed to the project brings in their own traffic engineer, a separate traffic report prepared by a licensed engineer. That is a fair argument that, if that analysis is in, basically, opposition to the analysis in the document, that is a fair argument that we would have to give credit to and that could raise the, the level, if it's at a negative declaration, to an EIR level requirement because that fair argument is brought before the decision-makers. So, that's an important distinction. Tying that back to the person who says, "Hey, I love my dead-end street and now I'm going to have traffic driving by." That's less of a fair argument because it's, it's, it's not balanced by fair evidence as required under the, or, I'm sorry, fair argument as required under the other threshold. If you're at, already at an EIR level analysis, a, anything that disputes that is required to be done by substantial evidence. You can't just bring in a fair argument and say, "Well, I don't like that traffic engineer's analysis and here's my competing one." That would, must rise to the level beyond a fair argument and must be seen as substantial evidence to dispute the facts in the EIR. Basically, an EIR, you look at it more, the threshold for saying that the analysis is faulty is higher, to summarize it. Do you have anything you want to add?
No.
And then, I'm going to turn it over to Tom. He's going to get back into some of the legal elements. But before we do so, is there any questions?
So, often, we hear from, particularly from stakeholders such as property owners and project applicants, will, will assert to you and to me that their rights have vested, that they have a property right to do what they want to do with their property. And so, there's a body of law that's developed called the vested, the vested rights doctrine. And I mentioned it, I alluded to it earlier, that, that part of the reason we got the vesting tentative map rule and some of the subdivision map rules that are, that are very favorable to the building community and to project applicants was because of what we got here. And you'll see in the slide here, we refer to the AVCO rule. AVCO was a Supreme Court case from 1978 that involved a difficult situation. There had been a project in the, in the pipeline for about eight years and that had received levels of, of city approval, including subdivision tentative maps had been approved. And these were, this was a phased subdivision project. At some point, eight years deep into it, the city decided that it was going to change the rules. And it did so successfully. It, it, it changed the rules. The builder sued, saying, "This is violating our vested rights." And the AVCO court in 1978 said, "You don't have a vested right. You only have a vested right under the common law rule, under AVCO, where you have received all of the entitled, the discretionary entitlements to which you're, or which you're required to obtain under the city law." From your standpoint, that would mean they've gotten all their subdivision maps, they've gotten the use permits they're required, they've gotten design review, they've gotten all those. But that doesn't vest your right. Then, they have to get a building permit, but that doesn't vest their right. Then, they have to do substantial work in reliance on that building permit. And that vests their right. Now, what is substantial work? Is that hiring an architect and, and doing preliminary work and getting financing? That doesn't vest your rights. Only when you've got the, the bulldozers out there and the contractors pounding nails do you vest your rights. Well, the building community went ballistic after this case came out. And they went to the legislature and they said, "This, this will make it impossible for us to finance deals. No one will ever build under these, under these uncertain situations." So, we have a variety of rules that, that followed the AVCO decision. And by the way, AVCO is still the law. There are situations where, where you will, you will want to change the rules midstream. There are a lot of reasons you can't do that now that the legislature has said, but there are some, some areas where you will be able- are some, some areas where you will be able to do that and you will have discretion. But in any event, one of the, one of the things that the legislature did, in addition to creating the vesting rules, they also said, well, here's something that we want to do that can create a contractual vesting. And this is where we got the development agreement law. And the development agreement law allows cities and other public agencies to enter into contracts with, with project applicants, and, and there is a give and take in that contract. So the negotiation starts, and the developer typically will, will ask for vesting of zoning regulations, general plan regulations, fees, like that, so that they know what the rules will be through the course of their development. Cities in turn will say, well, we want some goodies, we want some public benefits, and we will ask you to, you developer, to give us things that we would not be entitled to ask for in the normal permit process. The reason is, and I'm going to get to that for a sec, later, is that in the normal permit process, you're acting as judges, and you have to follow the rules. And one of the things, one of the rules you have to follow is that conditions have to be based in legislation, they have to be, they have to be based on impacts or other needs created by the project. That's not the case in a development agreement context. It's whatever the two willing parties can negotiate. Now, what the parties are going to ask for is going to depend on how cool the project is for the community. In other words, if it's a project that, that a city really wants, a city might be inclined to negotiate much more favorably to the builder, to the develop, to the applicant in that situation. By contrast, if it's a project that the community is a bit lukewarm about, the city's going to ask for a lot more in the way of public benefits. Anyway, that's what the development agreement statute allows. It didn't allow that before the AVCO decision. It came, this was passed in the early 1980s. Now, some of the procedures that require, that are required under state law and under our ordinance, we have a development agreement ordinance that we are required to have to, under state law, to enter into a development agreement. Public hearing is required before you can approve it. SEQA is required. This is a project. This is considered to be a legislative act that is subject to referendum. So if the city is negotiating and you approve a development agreement, understand that if the community hates it, the petition may get circulated to referend that decision. Always, again, vertical consistency, general plan consistency findings are required to be made, and again, it is a project subject to SEQA. Okay. I alluded to this earlier, and I want to, I want to emphasize this. When you're acting as judges, there is a requirement that you inform the world the basis for why you've acted, the basis upon which you've acted. This came from another case from 1974, a case called Topanga, involving a project development down in the Topanga Canyon. And there, the California Supreme Court told us for the first time that when you're making an adjudicatory decision, when you're acting as judges, CUP, design review, map, you have to not only be fair and impartial, but you have to adopt written findings explaining what you did. This, by the way, is not a legislative act, it's adjudicatory, so when you're acting in this capacity, it's not subject to referendum. A lot of people make that mistake. But your findings, I call it the best home court advantage in the law. This is your, a lot of people just hate writing findings because it's onerous and it's, it's, Noah's shaking his head, it's a pain in the butt. But findings are your, findings are your opportunity to tell your story. The findings, I could tell you this because I've done hundreds of them, or dozens of them. In lawsuits challenging your decision, the findings are the first document that the court reads. So when I talk about it being the best home court advantage in the law, this is where you get to tell your story and tell it well. And if you're denying a project, not only do you include the boilerplate findings that your municipal code requires you to make, but you gild the lily. And that's why we'll often suggest to you, if you're making a controversial decision, give us direction, tell staff to prepare good findings, and we'll bring them back to you to adopt. That's why we do it. It's a chance for us to tell our story in a convincing, persuasive, and complete way. Really, I can't emphasize this more strongly. It's, it's, it's an overlooked tool that we have, and it's something that is required. Again, we could spend hours talking about just findings and how you write them well, but just understand that this is something that when you're acting as a judge, you gotta do it.
Just to add, if somebody's going to challenge a project, that's the first place their attorney will look.
Okay. So the, the record before you also has to contain evidence to support your findings. It's a good idea, by the way, in your findings, to include some discussion about supporting evidence. What you listened to, what was presented to you that formed the basis that supported what you're doing. Not strictly required in the law, but it's a good idea. Again, it's your chance to gild the lily. It's a, it's a good chance to tell your story well, so that, and the Topanga Court said, the reason is so that, so that a reviewing court and the reviewing citizenry can understand what the heck you're doing, what the basis is for your decision, and 99 out of 100 times, your decision is a sensible one, and this is your way of showing that it's sensible.
Is this something that has to be in the documented findings that are written as part of the resolution? Or is the verbal record in the, because our minutes are basically video?
Yeah. So typically, you have to write, you have to adopt a resolution that will contain your findings. And most cities, including St. Helena, have what I call boilerplate findings. For every use permit you issue, you have to make four, or five, or six, seven different findings to, or you may not grant that permit. But just putting the boilerplate into your findings is really a bad practice, and it's, it's difficult to defend. And again, it's, it's missing your chance to tell your story well. So, and in a truly contentious situation, we'll want to add to the findings, all of the arguments that were presented that are outside of your boilerplate findings. So if a lot of people are coming up in opposition to the decision that you ultimately make, and they're raising arguments that aren't really clearly addressed in your boilerplate findings, I'll often recommend, if I think we're going to get sued, I'll recommend that we actually address all of those arguments and explain why we've either accepted or rejected them. And anyway, it's just a good chance. Now, there's a lot of law that suggests that the courts are not overly mechanical in viewing findings. I don't like to rely on that law too often, but in, in direct, you know, answer to your question, there is law that supports the fact that findings can be gleaned from the record. Let's not do any gleaning. Let's include explicit findings every time we think that we're going to get challenged. And frankly, for every decision, there ought to be, there ought, for every adjudicative decision, there ought to be good findings. That's just good land use practice.
And that's primarily staff's role to document those and to bring them to you when we, or to have them well-written when we bring it to you. I just said, that's primarily staff's role to have that accomplished and well-written when we bring the decision to you or the resolutions, ordinances, et cetera.
Okay. So we're, we need to keep pushing. So often, there's another constitutional provision that comes into play in land use decision-making, and that is what's known as the takings clause of both the federal, United States Constitution and the state constitution. And what you'll hear typically by project applicants who are not getting what they want, and property owners who are not getting what they want, is that your decision, some aspect of your decision is taking their property, is depriving them of their property value. There is a huge body of law on this. I'll just tell you that, that from the early 1980s, there was a, there was a California Supreme Court and a US Supreme Court case called Agans versus County of Marin. And Agans marked a new era in takings law, to some extent, in, in land use takings law. It was very deferential to, to us as decision makers, very relaxed, and recognized that, I think as the court said, land use planning could hardly go on if your decisions didn't to some extent impact and reduce property values to some extent. The law recognizes that all zoning diminishes property values to some extent. Takings law has recognized that. So what Agans did is it said that there were two components. It says, it says something is a taking if it, one, does not substantially advance a legitimate state interest, often called the nexus test, and two, denies a land, or, and it's a disjunctive standard that didn't make sense then, and I'll explain that it still doesn't, or denies a landowner economically viable use of the land. About 25 years later, in a case called Lingal versus Chevron, the Supreme Court finally recognized it, it made a, it made a boo-boo in Agans, and it eliminated the first test, which is, which created headaches for everyone because it really involved courts micromanaging whether your local decisions were good policy. And that's typically what courts don't do under constitutional separation of powers principles. So now, for your purposes, all you really need to know is that something is a taking if it deprives somebody of, of all economically viable use of their land. I'll just tell you, if you're ever going down that path, we're not going to, we're not going to resolve that here, but if it, if it looks like you're about to get into trouble, we'll talk about that. It's, yeah, that's, that's it, but, but be careful with that. That's, you know, books are written on that clause. And just understand that, that if you do affect a taking of someone's property, then the city is going to pay damages there. And so it's a, the downside is very steep. And so when we start telling you, be careful, this is looking like you're creeping into taking area, just be cognizant that, that gets expensive. And typically, those claims are brought in, in the context of a civil rights violation. Not only are you going to pay them for their land, you're going to pay them their attorney's fees too. That takes us to another area that, that you, you will be dealing with frequently, and that is the area of exactions. It's a, it's a term that is kind of an unpleasant one, but it's, it's, it's conditions and, and the things that you ask project applicants to give you to, to help offset or mitigate the impacts of their projects. Again, this is a huge body of law, but typically, you, you will be imposing conditions on maps, use permits, sometimes it, they get imposed on building permits, it's less frequent that that happens. What is an exaction typically? It's usually where you're requiring someone to dedicate land or pay fees. Now, sometimes that'll mean that you're going to require someone to maintain some of their land as open space, you're going to require setbacks, you're going to, you know, there will be repairian buffers, like that. You won't be requiring a dedication per se, but that's still deemed to be an exaction, where you're requiring somebody to essentially hold something in reserve that they, that otherwise would be available for development. This again is a huge body, and I'm going to summarize it by saying, you have to be acting reasonably. There has to be what's known as a nexus. There has to be some relationship between what you're asking for, what you're, you're requiring them to do, and what they're doing. What are the impacts or needs created by what their project is proposing? I'll hearken back, circle back to what I said right at the outset of this, which is, if you want to impose conditions and exactions, do it legislatively. Your general plan needs to have a section that talks about offsetting impacts. Your zoning ordinance needs to address these things. You need to have impact fee ordinances that have examined, that have undertaken what they call nexus studies to show that these projects do in fact generate these kinds of impacts. What the worst possible trouble you can get into is when you act in what's known as an ad hoc capacity. And that is, you're asking one specific developer or property applicant, project applicant or property owner, to do, to give something to the city when there's no law, there's no impact fee ordinance, there's no resolution, there's no general plan provision, you just think it ought to be done. You think it, it's a good idea. And I'm going to tell you that that's where cities get into big trouble, and that's where you walk down the takings path. The way to deal with that is, is it, is it not getting the condition you think makes sense? Of course not. The way to do it though, is in a sensible way, when you're addressing your, in your general plan, in your zoning ordinance, in your impact fee ordinances, get a good impact fee nexus study done. We do that, by the way, and I think the city, you know, fairly soon is going to be updating its impact fee nexus study. That's how you impose it. Follow what's known as, as a generally applicable legislatively imposed exaction requirement. You're in strong shape if you do it that way. And that's all we need to say about that. There is a state law, by the way, that what's known as the Mitigation Fee Act, founded at Government Code 6600 at SEA, that imposes these, these rules and others on us when we, when we impose these. Okay. And I'm getting the hook right now. Briefly, we'll talk about another thing that's very important in land use planning is affordable housing. The main place you're going to find these rules, I'm going to really breeze through these quickly, is your housing element, which is one of your seven general plan mandatory elements. The housing element law is very complicated. It's something that, fortunately, you only have to address every four or eight years, depending on how good the state thinks you are. And the state, by the state, I refer to the Department of Housing and Community Development, which implements the housing element law. It certifies or not your housing element. Other affordable housing laws that you will grapple with from time to time, and we will, when it comes up, we'll tell you about them. One is called the Housing Accountability Act. It's really more commonly referred to as the anti-NIMBY law. This is a, this is a place where the state has, again, tried to clip our wings, has, many cities that were turning down affordable housing projects and housing projects generally. This law is one that the state imposed on us to limit the circumstances under which we can deny housing projects, particularly affordable housing projects. There are other laws that come into play. There's a water and sewer priority for affordable housing projects. There is a law called the least cost zoning law that requires us to, to zone available land to accommodate what we've identified for housing in our general plan, housing elements. There's a density bonus law that, that allows developers to get concessions or incentives when they propose a certain percentage of their projects as affordable. There are laws requiring us to, to approve second units, and there are inclusionary housing rules. Yes, ma'am?
Does the law say that you should validate that the second units are being used for affordable housing?
The law does not require that.
Yeah, it's a shame.
Yeah.
Repeat the question.
The question was, does the second unit law require us to validate that the product, that the units, the second units are being used for affordable housing? The answer is no. That law was written really to allow second units as a, as a presumed form of affordable housing, but I think the, the question, you know, is, is stating the obvious that many second units are not used for affordable housing, or are not truly affordable, and they're certainly not deed restricted.
Oh, sorry. Does the law allow density, what's the term?
Bonus?
Bonuses, or does it require density bonuses?
It requires density bonuses, and it also requires concessions and incentives.
Requires?
Under certain circumstances, where the project conforms to certain requirements. I'm just going to say quickly that, that the legislature has also said that where cities impose certain growth management laws, those are under very close scrutiny by the courts, and certain findings have to be made to justify their use, and some of them are per se invalid. You basically have to show that, that specific projects under your, are not, are properly may be denied under your growth management law because they, they will endanger public health, safety, and welfare. Finally, very quickly, we've been through most of this, the public has rights. The public has rights. And when I say the public, I mean all stakeholders, neighbors, folks in the community, and project applicants. We've been through most of these here. We've been through most of these here. But just understand that the law recognizes that stakeholders have rights in your land use decision making. And that's it.
Thank you all very much for coming. There's hard copies of the presentation available. If you don't have one, we can also email it to anyone who's interested, both here currently or watching at home. They can email me at nhoush@cityofsthelena.org. And just please identify Land Use 101 presentation in the subject line. I'll happily send you a copy.
It is also located on the city's website on the agenda.
Thank you, city clerk. If there is any questions, we will happily try to answer them with a couple more minutes before we break for dinner, before the 6:00 PM council meeting starts.
On the notification, is there any case law supporting notifying renters in addition to property owners? Because there's been some discussion of that.
The answer to that is, is no. In the context of land use decision making, stakeholders are generally deemed to be property owners. And so typically, the mailed notice is given to, to folks based on the, on the property tax assessment rule.
I will add to that. However, staff occasionally will make a determination at their own discretion, if it's appropriate to notify all residents rather than just property owners. And I have been a part of doing that. That is an ability to do that at the staff's discretion. Anybody else? Thank you all very much for coming.